And softball on my birthday, which is May 7th.
I'd like to call this meeting of Monticello City Council to order. Would you please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? And remain standing as Steve Cagle from Lodge Church sleeps us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we are very grateful to Monticello and the community and the people that are here that you bless and that bless the community through that. Father, we pray that every man and woman in this room tonight, that you will be with them as they make decisions for community. Thank you for their service and thank you for what they do to make it a better place. We pray in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Ms. Lively? Mr. Woodham?
Here.
Mr. Reed? Mr. Burris?
Here.
Mr. Coon?
Here.
Mr. Broderick?
Here.
Mr. Brock? And Mr. Piercy?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Public participation, in-person public participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to commencement of the meeting and must address council from the seat and table provided. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. Is there anyone tonight, Rob? Thank you. Remote participation, this is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through web conference. Is there anyone tonight more?
No, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, approval of documents and action items is listed. Claims report, claims dated January 9, 2024 through January 22, 2024. Claims dated January 23, 2024 through February 12, 2024. Meeting minutes, city council meeting minutes, January 8, 2024. Planning and zoning board meeting minutes, August 21, 2023. Historic preservation meeting minutes, November 7, 2023. Permit report, January 2024. Fire report, January 2024. And police report, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Any comments or questions of city staff? Hearing or seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Bo?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. There's no mayor's report tonight. I'm sure you're all disappointed. New business mayoral appointment, Cole Carey, Alderman Ward II. Mr. Carey applied via email, or not via email, there's a form on the city website. I talked to him and was very impressed by what I thought he could bring to the council. So I would ask for a motion to approve my appointment in a second.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Carey, or Mr. Cole Carey? Cole Carey.
Want a copy to follow along or just repeat after me?
I'll look at it.
Might as well, just to be precise.
It's funny, you put funny words in.
All right. Raise your hand or repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Alderman Ward II.
Of the office of Alderman Ward II.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome to the council.
Thank you.
I need you to sign for... Alan, just sign for me right there.
Here, right? Heard always. He's going to take his seat at the table. And Andrea and Ryan.
Yeah, I showed him the seat. Otherwise, I would have said it.
Welcome, and I'm looking forward to working with you on the council. Sangamon Valley CEO class presentation, are you going to start it?
Good evening. We are representing Sangamon Valley CEO this evening. This year, we have 10 students from three different schools. We have our first ever daily involvement student engagement. Very exciting this year. Because of busy schedules and work schedules, we get two of our prime members that are with me here tonight to present what we appreciate the council and the city and how they support our program, both financially and with the space and with resources in the business. Terry helps us judge our very first ever pitch that the students give and mayor stoner. So we just appreciate the city and the way that they are involved and support us. What's more exciting is always hearing from the students and what they are gaining from their experience in CEO. We just recently executed our class business. So they're going to tell you a little bit about what they've learned just in this first semester and whether we want to. I'll let you introduce yourself and say what you like.
I'm Cole Swinsey. I was the CEO of the class business. I'm Alan Good, and I was the CEO of the class business. So our class business this year was very successful. We raised about $5,600, which almost funds all of our grants for our individual businesses. Our event was called Dancing Through the Decades, and it was a retro prom event for all the adults and stuff for that date night that you guys wanted. So we, it was very successful. We had a great turnout, about 100 people there. You know, all the parents were getting into it. There was no alcohol at the event, but people were still dancing and having a good time. So it was nice to see everyone being able to get out of the house for a little bit. Yep. Can you repeat the question again?
What's something that you've learned in the first semester? And maybe you can expound a little bit on the whole set. Like, so you went through the process of class business. And what's, what's a great part of our program is that it is very much blood and soup organized. So I'm the facilitator on purpose to make sure things don't fall off the rails and kind of push them forward. But they really take the reins and do all the work and make all the decisions, both budgetary and what they're going to do for the event. So rather than something that you've learned along the way that you never really thought of before executing this event?
I'd say for me personally, it was, it really stuck out to me how important it is to follow through on your promises. We had a lot of sponsors for the event to make it possible. So we had a lot to keep track of with our different tiers and where we promised everybody. So that was something that was really important. Same thing here. I'm not a very organized person, but it took a great deal of organization to put an event like this together. Whether it was keeping track of like what we offered to our sponsorships or where we put our decorations or receipts, anything like that. Like you have to have everything some organization and usually give that to someone else to figure out, but I definitely had to learn it by myself.
Other than class business, what's another thing that has stood out about the program? And why are you glad you joined CEO?
Me personally, it's the connections that I've built. I've always wanted to go into a business like environment. My dad and I would always talk business, talk economics in the car ride, or it's up to wherever we're going. And so I've always known that, and it's allowed me to, this class allowed me to build those connections with all of you guys or all the business owners that we've met in our time at CEO that will allow me to have a very successful business career in my future with whichever way I pursue. For me, I'm going to have to say the confidence. If you asked me at the start of the school year to come in and talk to you guys, I probably would have been a little nervous and pretty scared. But after all the site visits, giving our presentations to new members and our board pitches, I'm feeling a lot better. And it was great just to like be able to look back and see how far I've come.
Questions can we answer for all of you about the program?
What do you have coming up this semester?
We've got our personal businesses, so we just started. We got our logos. We came up with names and our brand promises. So for my personal business, I'm doing like jerky dog treats that are supposed to be like a healthy alternative at like a lower price.
Okay.
I'm doing game day designs, so I've always loved doing art, especially sports art. So I'll be doing like commission artwork for whoever your favorite player is or favorite team, I can do a piece for you, whether it's painting or drawing.
How has the CEO program compared to the traditional classroom setting for you?
It's not that. I mean, going just like, whether it's driving yourself to class or going to Decatur champagne for different site visits, it's very, I mean, it's very professional, but it's very like, like you can kind of do whatever you want. Like you, you have that freedom to work on whatever you want in that class as long as it's working on your individual business or whatever you're working on at the time. But you kind of, you're not as like being told what to do as in a traditional classroom setup. I have to say, we have some pretty great business classes at the high school, but I think it's no compare. It's a lot of simulations on like computers in class, and it comes nowhere close to being able to like sit in with business professionals and CEOs and learn from them. It's a great experience.
So, so what I'm getting is if it was a traditional day and you were told you had to be there at 7:30, you might not be as motivated as you are when you go to go business.
Exactly, yes.
The arriving at 7:15, I always like think like second semester that everyone's going to drop off and stop showing up at 7:15. But for them, they might push it a tiny bit more in the second semester, but for the most part, they're, they show up at 7:15 professionally dressed. Like they said, whether we're in Decatur or champagne or or Dena or BeMent. It's just neat to see even those skills being honed in each student.
I certainly appreciate all they, all they've accomplished. I, I did, she said I sat in on their presentation, the first presentation they had. And I was over, just amazed at how cool, calm, and collected this group was this year. It was probably the most cerebral group I've been around with these, with these kids. They, they were just right, right on task and everything was very professionally presented. So congratulations for your efforts. And I'm looking forward to the end of the year thing. I like to buy stuff.
Shameless plug for trade show. Trade show will be moving first in Allerton Community Building. So all 10 students will be presenting what they came up with for their individual business. Part of their next steps, all the money that they raised for their class business, they have to do an image pitch to the board to get a grant. And then they have to keep their receipts and turn in those in a report before they get reimbursed for those grants. So it's a lot of learning to keep track of all those things, learning to what your financials look like. There's a lot of hands-on learning that goes on.
Anyone else? Well, I'd like to thank you for attending this evening. I'm sorry there weren't 10 of you here because it makes it easier to present when you've got 10 voices, you don't have to. But I thought you did a great job tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
You don't have to stay if you don't want to. Okay, moving on to Resolution 2024-04, conditional use permit allowing for mixed-use occupancy. It includes retail, residential, short-term rental, and a tavern at 315 West Washington City of Monticello, Hyatt County, Illinois. Jim?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to let you know, I think I was having some issues logging on, but is he on now more? Thank you. So, excuse me. Resolution 2024 is granting a revised conditional use permit to allow a mixed-use occupancy at 315 West Washington City of Monticello, Hyatt County, Illinois. The applicant, TNR Ventures, Todd Thornton, who is present online, is requesting a revision to a previously approved conditional use permit from 2022-48 that allowed for the mixed-use occupancy. The parcel is own business. The new proposed uses are retail, residential, which is a short-term rental, and a tavern at the 315 West Washington location. And if you, I believe he was in here two council meetings ago and requested a liquor license, if that's correct, and it was approved. So this is kind of a follow-up to that, that now this is where he's going to put it. And due to the ice storm we had, the last council meeting, this got pushed to today. So the following copies I presented for your review is the public notice published in the December 27 edition of the Hyatt County Journal Republican, a vicinity map and photo, and the proposed Resolution 2024-04. It's recommended the city council discuss and approve the proposed with, for the three new uses that include retail, residential, and the tavern at the 315 West Washington, Monticello, Illinois at today's meeting. We, we received one, at the PZB meeting, we did receive one comment in favor of this from Kelly's Accounting, and we, no other, had no other comments from neighboring properties.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions?
Sure. Wasn't this supposed to be a speakeasy?
Yeah. Right.
Yes. I mean, there was something else before, and then a speakeasy, now it's going to a tavern?
No, Rod, I would, let me clarify for that, because I had to look up what a speakeasy was, because that is a term from the 1920s that it was an illegal bar.
Understand.
They called it a speakeasy. This is actually to fit in our zoning regulations. It's, it's a tavern. It's a tavern that sells just as a bar would.
Okay. And a place to sleep.
No. The place to sleep is upstairs.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I thought you meant a tavern. Okay, I was picturing an 1800s type place where it's different. So speakeasy in basement, residential, on the very top, and then retail in the middle. Correct? That's what he's shooting for. He's trying, like trying to be open and genuine.
So they're just adding retail space now?
They're adding the tavern.
What's where?
They approve the liquor license for zoning approval.
Where's entrance to the tavern?
It's going to be around the back, from the municipal parking lot.
So it won't be through the retail?
No. These are three separate spaces, entrance.
It's a speakeasy, Eric. You have to come in the back door and they have.
That's what I was saying.
I know all about that.
Coming in around the back.
Right. Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-04?
The move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call?
Ms. Bo?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2024-05, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the city of Monticello and Mike Heiniger concerning the property located at 818 South Market Street, Monticello, Illinois. Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. This is going to be one of five of the application grant, applications for the building improvement grant in front of you all. This is part of the, the first round that we've had, the business district expanded, so not just downtown, but the legs coming up too and leading out of town. We had nine applications this round, all great projects. The review committee decided to focus kind of on space needs. We have a scarcity issue right now, in case you weren't aware, and also building safety issues. So that's kind of the background for it. So the first applicant up is Michael Heiniger, who owns 818 South Market Street. Hedro Pottery is an occupant. And then there is a vacant retail space which is spoken for right now. But they would like to install another sink and a restroom so they don't have to share a restroom between those two spaces, and they can in fact be separate. Estimated project cost is $22,000, and recommended reimbursement is 50% of the total cost up to $10,000.
Thank you. Any comments or questions of Kelly? If not, is there a motion to approve ordinance 2024-05? Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any comments? Last chance. Hearing or seeing none, I'll draw a call.
Ms. Bo?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2024-06, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the city of Monticello and Jackson Property Development LLC, 204 West Washington Street concerning the property located at 204 to 206 West Washington Street, Monticello, Illinois. Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. This is one that the committee was probably the most excited about. The applicant is Jackson Property Development LLC. That's the 204 to 206 West Washington Street space. Modern Blend Salon is the first floor occupant of 206. And 204 West Washington is one of two that is vacant in downtown, one of two spaces, and it is not usable. The owner would like to remove the wooden deck canopy on the front. No, let's all take a breath here. Install a window where the walkout door was and then repair the masonry and facade. Estimated project window is spring of 2024. Estimated project cost is $21,000. Just a couple of things about this building. The deck and balcony was removed, or was recommended removal after identified by a structural engineer that the city hired for that entire block to take a look at it. It's a structure that was called out in our past and present comprehensive plan, downtown plan, strategic plan, as being something that doesn't quite lend itself to the ambiance of downtown and the historic integrity there. It, you know, it's a building that's, was built in the 1850s, so it's an old building. We'd love to showcase its beauty again. And overall, I think all tenants, if you saw the supporting documents, every single tenant on that block has submitted a letter asking for this. So we're pretty excited to see this one happen.
Thank you. Any comments or questions of Kelly?
So basically, this is just ripping it off and going back to the original facade?
So they would be ripping that, they would be removing it, ripping off some soul.
All right.
And then they'd be doing some masonry and, and window repair work. But yeah, I think the idea that they have is similar to what they have done in their other buildings.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2024-06?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Bo?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. On ordinance 2024-07, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the city of Monticello and 501 West Bridge Street LLC concerning the property located at 501 West Bridge Street, Monticello, Illinois. Kelly?
Sure. So this is the property when you first head out of town on Bridge Street. It's just right after the railroad bridge on your left. Occupants are RE/MAX, We Farm Organics, and Sage City Insurance. The owner would like to remove the shingled facade and replace it with a metal awning as well as some new guttering. They have some issues with drainage, not just in the parking lot, but off the building in general. And estimated project window would be spring of '24. Estimated project cost, $11,588. The committee is recommending 50% of total cost reimbursement up to $5,794.
Do any comments or questions of Kelly? Hearing or seeing none, is there a?
I did have one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the estimate project cost, $11,588. If it goes over that, will we then?
We cap it at that, for the same reason if it goes under that.
Okay.
Yeah. So our, our idea is they're turning in pretty accurate estimates. We understand things happen if they need to come back for, you know, a change, that's fine. But so far, it's been, actually, we haven't had any issues.
Just beautification.
No, I'm just saying, if it, let's say it turns out to be a $13,000 project, we reimburse, because it, because the cap is $10,000, so this would be, you know, but.
Yeah, so we do 50% of the project cost because of, we're committing obligating funds, and we don't know when it'll be done. Everything, we want to kind of make sure we stick, have a hard line.
Yeah, that's fine. Otherwise, it just says up to.
Yep. Sometimes they come in lower.
Okay.
So that's why we put whichever is less.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2024-07?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Start here.
Any comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Bo?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
And Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2024-08, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the city of Monticello and Balance and Beauty LLC concerning the property located at 214 West Washington Street, Monticello, Illinois.
Thank you, Mayor. So Balance and Beauty LLC is actually now the owner of 214 West Washington. That was formerly occupied 20-ish years ago last by Dr. Brady. They had a dentist office there. But she is a, will be a new business in downtown. She's doing substantial renovation to the interior and the exterior. But this one kind of ties in with the ordinance you're going to hear as well. So I'm going to talk about them both at the same time, if that's okay. So we, after lots of conversations with both this property and the 212 building, which is the brown bag building, we had some serious concerns about the integrity of the masonry. There are some issues with water leaching in the brown bag wall and going down in between and then coming out and damaging, because they have a shared wall, damaging the 214 West Washington Street building. So we, the city actually hired a structural engineer to get their opinion on it. So that way, it's kind of a, you know, not one property owner versus another. And this is a great opportunity where we have both property owners working together. But this owner in particular would like to replace, she will be, replacing the roof and gutters, removing two trees and replacing the outer doors and windows and doing some facade work. She did meet with myself and Ketti Hudson, who is our local architect, for some guidance as it relates to the facade work. We want something, we recommend something that lends itself to the historic character of the building. That brick, or that stone masonry facade is not original, obviously. And so she was very receptive to getting ideas from that. But because of the amount of investment for this one, as well as the 212 building, we are actually, or the committee is actually recommending that the match is higher than the $10,000 cap. So the estimated project cost for just those items is $27,890, excuse me. And the committee recommended, is recommending reimbursement of 50% up to $15,000 because it's a situation where, like you said, you don't know what you get into, like you said, you don't know what you get into, but we're pretty confident there's going to get, they're going to get into something else.
Comments or questions? Uh, is there a motion to approve ordinance 2024-08?
Some movement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call, please.
Ms. Voe?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Widdum?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Piercey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2024-09, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and Harleen Swing concerning the property located at 212 West Washington Street, Monticello, Illinois. Callie?
Thank you. So this is back, it would be east again, that east wall. This is just simply to do a complete grind and tuck pine, tuck pointing of that west wall that's shared with the Balance and Beauty building. That will hopefully alleviate the water infiltration that's going on. Estimated project cost is $24,000. Again, we anticipate some extra stuff coming up there because it's pretty bad. And the committee, because of that, is recommending 50% up to $15,000.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
I, I want to take a minute to say, this is awesome. Like, all these projects are, are great. I'm glad that we're able to do this. And thanks for all of your work with these businesses because, I mean, this is, all the ones we've seen tonight are much needed. And I'm glad to see they're actually happening, so, well done.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2024-09?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those, uh, no, all those in favor. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Voe?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Widdum?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
And Mr. Piercey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 2024-10, Resolution repealing and replacing the City of Monticello's policy manuals. Mr. Summers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, from time to time, we review and take, um, our employee policy as need be. Last year, Human Resources Director, Morin Metcalf, and I had several conversations, um, regarding, um, but what kind of initiated this was the state's mandated paid leave for all workers act. Again, we had numerous conversations internally and, um, asked our city attorneys, Ansel and Glink, to review all of our employee policy, um, and give us a recommendation on how we need to be compliant with state statutes. They identified a few things that need to be updated. And one of those was, uh, to streamline, we put, we used to have all full-time employee policy manual. Now it's all employee policy manuals. So we combined the full-time and the part-time into this, um, and going forward. It ensures number two, and, and they drafted the memorandum number two, uh, ensures compliance with that paid leave for all workers act. And then they, uh, made the appropriate, uh, revisions, um, to Smoke Free Illinois Act, Family Bereavement Leave Act, Victims Economic Security and Safety Act, Employee Blood and Organ Donation Leave Act. So all of those are incorporated into the new, uh, employee policy manual. And then one thing that, um, we tweaked internally, we tweaked, um, or became compliant with the mandatory five personal days, um, but we actually have six because we have always offered the employee's birthday as a floating holiday, so we've moved that out of a floating holiday area. So we have, um, six, uh, personal days. It is recommended the city council discuss, um, this resolution this evening and, uh, approve if you so desire.
Thank you. So that really brings everything in, in line with what should be in line. Am I correct, until they change it all again, but?
Well, it is currently, we're.
Currently, we'll be.
We'll be in compliance.
All right, good enough. Any comments or question, questions of Terry? Appreciate that you're getting all this taken care of. We've talked about some of these issues for a while, so.
A lot of help from Human Resource.
Comments, questions? If not, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-10?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Last choice, last chance. Anything? Ask Terry. I'm not hearing or seeing anything. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Voe? Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Widdum?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Piercey?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2024-11, an ordinance declaring surplus property and authorizing the purchase of property. Mr. Summers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, anytime we get rid of property, buy property, um, first, uh, it's discussed during the budget and approved by the council within that budget. These all were included in the 2024, um, budget. And then secondly, we have to come to council and, uh, pass an ordinance declaring the surplus and, and purchasing of property. The items, um, in this particular ordinance, 2024-11, uh, we will be trading in the 2017 Ford Transit van, towards a 2023 Silver, Chevy Silverado 2500 from Rick Riddings that's in the water department. Trading in a 2015 John Deere Gator towards a 2024 John Deere Gator from AHW. That will be used for, um, beautification. Then, um, trading in a 2008 John Deere tractor towards a 2023 John Deere tractor from AHW. These were all, um, discussed and are included in the 2024 budget. The tractor is going to go, the winter weather tractor is shot. That's one we're trading in. The new tractor will go to Public Works. And then the current Public Works tractor will be the new winter weather operation, uh, tractor because its deck, uh, it's kind of rotted out in winter weather. They don't have those, they don't need a mowing deck for the winter weather operations. So it is recommended, uh, the city council will discuss and approve ordinance 2024-11 this evening.
Any questions of Terry? Comments? Is there a motion to approve ordinance, uh, 2024-11, ordinance declaring surplus property and authorizing the purchase of property?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Voe?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Widdum? Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Piercey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2024-12, an ordinance establishing special service area number five, Dancing Acres subdivision in the City of Monticello. Oh, Callie?
Thank you, Mayor. So Dancing Acres is a subdivision off of Old Route 47. When it's fully built out, it'll have 60 lots. Um, I believe phase one is in, infrastructure's in, and lots are listed now. Did you, sorry, I thought you were going to say something. As per state statute, the next step for this process, um, is to approve the establishing ordinance for special service area number five. Um, some of you weren't here, but, uh, the city council approved the proposing ordinance back in September and held a public hearing in November. You have to wait a certain number of days, um, once you do those particular actions. And so here we are today for the proposed, or excuse me, the establishing ordinance. Um, the subject area will be levied a maximum of 50 cents, uh, tax per $100 of equalized assessed value for a maximum of 20 years. And then the developers reimburse that SSA, uh, contribution every year for those eligible costs, um, identified in the proposing ordinance throughout the life of the SSA. It is recommended that city council discuss and approve this ordinance.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2024-12?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone have anything to say? Crowd, crowd tonight, I like it. Roll call.
Ms. Lively? Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Widdum?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Piercey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Honor of persons report. Mayor?
Just quickly say thank you to everyone for welcoming here. Excited to be here. Looking forward to working with all of you.
Thank you.
One of my constituents actually approached me a few weeks ago about offering one 30-minute parking spot on each side of the square. For those who own businesses who can have people pull in and pull out because they noticed that there's a lot of people parking there that perhaps may work up on the square. And that customers aren't complaining that there's no quick in-and-out parking spots.
Thank you. Pardon? Keeping the quiet part. Tom?
Nope.
Eric?
I'll do it enclosed.
Any questions? Do we have to?
Talk to you later.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, I had a, a question or concern, uh, the, over Camp Creek, when Marcus Street goes over Camp Creek, there's a, there's a power line with a couple of, uh, poles that have been damaged and the, and the line is sinking down and there's, there's issues. You know, I'm afraid that there's, there might be other issues there. And I know it's not the city's responsibility, but, um, it'd be nice.
How long, how long's that been like? That's been like that ever since I can remember. And I've lived here 50 years.
I'm pretty sure it's.
It's telecom.
All the way down. Now, yeah, it's not power. It's, um, because we've looked into it before and I think we're at their mercy.
I understand that.
We can certainly follow it.
Thanks for.
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, yeah.
Anything else anyone wants to say? Uh, police chief's report. Chief Ross?
It's been a while since we saw each other again, so, uh, Jason Schumar retired after 18 years, so we thank him for his service on that. His last day was January 27th, so, um, we're finishing up. I forgot to do a background on one. Then I think we'll give a conditional offer to him. Excited about that. We did have, uh, we're getting a lot of these. We had a search and rescue on January 22nd, uh, just outside of town over by Trailblazers. 14-year-old, I think. 14 or 15-year-old kid, uh, walked off, no shoes, looking appropriate. Remember that was when it was kind of icy and pretty wet, so we were able to find him, I believe it was less than an hour, uh, over at the Trailblazers. It's nice to be able to get things going, um, on that. And then we are putting in for a new camera grant. It's a 50-50 grant for new body cameras. Uh, we found that the ones that we have now are less than desirable. They are a little rough. The tech support just isn't there like it was maybe when they first got them, so, I was able to kind of find some funds within our budget, so we won't need an amendment or anything like that if granted the camera grant.
That's it. Any questions of the chief? Prior chief, John Rupke.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we had a very busy month last month. Um, we had 72 calls. Most we've ever run in the 29 years I've been on is 51 calls in a month, so we blew that away last month. I've now been, um, summoned for all alpha calls, which is if somebody slips out of bed or things like that, we're getting called on all that, so. Been quite a busy month. Training for the month, um, uh, the first week, we did air pack training and, uh, air pack maintenance. We have to change out the batteries in our air packs every year. Um, that's our safety device. It's called a PASS device. And a firefighter goes down or is immobil, that PASS device will start to make a, if you ever watched Chicago Fire or any of those, it'll start to beep real bad. Very annoying. Um, but you're able to locate a firefighter. So we have to change out the, the batteries in those air packs every, uh, every year. We also did SCBA, uh, emergency dining and doffing. It's always good to practice that because you want to be able to get that gear on quickly. And so, uh, we practice that quite often. Uh, the second week, we, we get a lot of, we practice, um, using our CO monitor. It's a little tricky to get it working, but, um, we have quite a few calls with CO calls, people. Uh, the CO detector goes off and then we have to, uh, go over there and monitor the air and so forth. We also do equipment orientation. Um, all firefighters need, need to learn where everything's at and all the vehicles we have. So we'll, we'll call off a piece of equipment. They gotta go find it. You want to be able to do that quickly so that if you do come to an emergency situation, we call for some, a certain tool. They're not looking at all the different compartments. They pretty much know where to find it. So we do a little bit, uh, we do that type of training. Third week, we went, we did a Viobin tour. Uh, we set that up and thank you to Viobin. They bought us pizza that night and did a tour. But if you've ever been in Viobin, um, it's like a maze. It's, I've been there many times and it's still very confusing. And then two nights later, we had the, the alarm go off at 2:00 in the morning at Viobin and we knew where the, the power was and we, we kind of knew before, but, um, it's something we like to, especially with new firefighters and even people that have been around a long time, to go through Viobin. There's several different buildings and they all do different things. They all have different hazards to them, so it's kind of nice to, uh, to go through that every once in a while. Uh, on January 3rd, we met, I met with a fire marshal from, uh, the state of Illinois. Uh, he wasn't there to do anything, uh, you know, find us or anything like that. It was more, uh, kind of a refresher on some of the things we need to do as a fire department, training and so forth. We, we pretty much met all those requirements. He's always a good resource if we ever need anything to, to, uh, to call him, so, uh, that, that was a good meeting. The same day, we also met for the Pike County reunification training. Mary was there, of course, and, uh, that's always, and Rob, of course, and, uh, that's always great training. On January 29th, we did the, we had another meeting, local emergency planning committee and, uh, an EMA meeting, um, to discuss different situations in, in, that could happen in Pike County. One of the things we are planning for March is a, to put into place the reunification, school reunification would be meant school and do a fake fire drill, get the kids out of the school, get them re-unified over at the church. And so it'll be, um, a Pike County, um, exercise. And it's a kind of a secret, so we can't tell you which day. It's supposed to be the real life, so. I know what day it is. So we're not supposed to prepare for it. We're just supposed to call it and then people are supposed to show up, so. And then the last day of the month, we did the firefighters association meeting. Kirby's been nice enough to, um, host that. We do that every other month. Um, it's, we're getting a pretty good turnout with that, so. And then we talk about different, uh, things that the fire, uh, departments need in Pike County and we have, and we, and we, uh, do training, talk about training and, uh, different needs that the departments can share, so. I think that's all I had for tonight. Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments or question of either chief?
I would like to just publicly say what I've shared with the two of them. It has been phenomenal to see our, our police and fire departments working together collaboratively. And I know, I mean, Rob laid the groundwork for the Emergency Management Agency, understanding this is the county, not just the city of Monticello, but, but what he did has really set the stage for all of these agencies working together. So whether it's an emergency at Viobin, if it's a school, if it's an anhydrous tank leaking, um, you know, I just, I feel very proud of, of how the different agencies are working together and I really appreciate the two of you and your leadership and what you're doing to set that tone for everyone you work with.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I add one thing though? You can't forget the city because the city gets involved in all the planning that we do, this, uh, Public Works, and we do really do appreciate that. One thing I want, just want, Callie, I just want to mention that you mentioned grants. I just want to thank you for all your work. She put in a grant for us for almost over $200,000 for air packs. And our air packs are, what do you think, 26 years old? From 1998, 96, somewhere around there, so. They're badly needed and she brought in a nice grant for us and, uh, submitted, everybody keep their finger crossed, uh, that we, that grant, so thank you, Callie, for that.
Okay. City administrators report. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, welcome to Cole Carey. Uh, congratulations or condolences, whichever that, that is. As I do with all elected or appointed officials, I invite them to come in to meet, um, staff. Cole came in last Thursday. Um, I don't know, all two and a half hours maybe, um, and we kind of go door to door and, and Cole had a lot of good questions. So, congratulations. Bond rating, uh, we did confirm. Uh, I'd mentioned it was looking for narrowly to increase from double A minus. We did go to double A. Tim King was involved with doing all that. I think he'll be here next. Next council meeting or the one following, um, just to kind of talk to the council about that, uh, double A rating. And then appropriation ordinance. Should have that in front of the council, um, last meeting this month or the first meeting in March, hopefully. Should have. That'll add tonight.
Hey, thank you. This time, we need to go into closed session under 5 ILC S120/2C, 22 closed session minutes. Uh, when we come back into open session, we will take action in open session on Resolution 2024-13, which. 2024-13, which involves approving or putting out what, what we've released. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Opposing paper, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Thank you. You're not supposed to...
Point of order. Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Constant.
Okay. Point of order. Excuse me, yes?
After you take action on that, that one item, then you'll be immediately adjourning the meeting, is that correct?
That's exactly right.
Okay, I thought so, thank you.
We're out of closed session. We are going to approve resolution 2024-13, which adds...
June 12th, 2022.
June 12th, 2022, is being released. Anything else? That's all? Is there... 2022? 2023? 2022. I made that up. 23, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a roll call, please, Jill.
Yes. Ms. Lively?